So, okay, 8:30, folks. Thanks for coming, staff, citizens, everyone, council, etc. So today, the next step operating. So CFO, Ms. Merritt, if you want to have at it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present the FY23 operating budget to you today. Before we get started, I just want to emphasize how much of a labor of love this whole development process really is and the effort that it takes from your staff to prepare this and get us to this point today. So with that, I would like to recognize the three analysts who spent a lot of time working through this process with us. Jolly Omar, wherever he is, he was the lead analyst this year for the budget process. Kari Thorin, who has provided a lot of support, and then Hannah Whitehurst, who helped a lot with the presentation from FIRE. So I thank them for all of their work. All right. So today, our agenda is to go through some fund accounting and structure essentials. Just a refresher of the 2020 citizen survey that we completed last year. A quicker update on the 21-year-end review. I know we went through that more in-depth several weeks ago. And the 22 financial update, so just where we are today, a couple good updates there for you. And then we'll round out with the FY23 operating budget review. Next week, we will look at our debt service fund, local option sales tax, and road use tax, and then jump into everyone's favorite CIP review. All right. So before we get started, I just wanted to give an overview of fund accounting, which is how this budget is built and something that we are required to do. So we have 111 funds, and you can think of those as kind of their own mini bank accounts. The money that comes into those is given to us for a specific purpose, and we keep them separated so that we can really monitor them for compliance and make sure that we're expending the funds in accordance with the rules that are set out for those individual funding sources. We divide our 111 funds into four major fund types. So we have our governmental funds, our special revenue funds, our internal service funds, and enterprise funds. And we'll give you a couple of examples on the next slide so that you can follow along. So our governmental funds are going to be really, I would say, mostly tax-supported type of funds. So general fund, hotel motel tax fund, and the library levy fund, those are just some examples. Our special revenue funds are road use tax, local option sales tax, or grant funds. Our internal service funds are going to be our funds that only get their money from other funds. So those would be like our risk fund, our IT fund, and our employee insurance fund. And then lastly, our enterprise funds, these are our business-type units that we have. So some examples there are sewer fund, solid waste fund, and golf fund. All right, our budget process. We kicked this off formally as staff on September the 15th. We held our budget kickoff and departments started entering budget requests. We were working through payroll changes, revenue projections. We met with our departments to review all of that back in November, and then we have been working over the last month to tick and tie all of our accounts, and now we are here today. So last year was our community survey year in 2020, and it impacted the FY2022 budget. The top four responses for what the city's highest priority should be are listed there for you. Obviously, not many changes here, emphasis on streets, neighborhoods, police services, and economic development. The budget that we're presenting to you today remains in alignment with those areas. Okay, so everybody should have their packets. In your packet, you had an overview memo, all of the budget detail and the summary reports, department business plans, and their staffing detail pages, the current CIP summary report, and project pages. And then I added this future follow-up memo. So I just wanted to point out that if you have any questions today that we're not able to answer, we'll follow the same process as prior years. We'll be taking diligent notes, and we'll issue a follow-up memo probably sometime mid-next week. All right. So for FY2021, our negative cash funds remain consistent. And you can see that back in '11 and '12, we had a significant amount of negative cash funds. Our bond rating agencies do not look highly upon that, so we have worked diligently over the past many, many years to bring ourselves out of that position. The only negative cash fund that remains is IT, and you will likely continue to see that be the case. It is just because of how we have to prepay our software. Generally, the fund is not negative, it just appears that way because of timing on payments. We did increase our reserves in '21 to 20.6 million. Obviously, as we talked about two weeks ago, that's over 39%. The policy is between 17 and 25, and we'll be working to bring that down with you over the next several months. We had an opportunity to visit with our bond rating agencies on Thursday of this week. Our prior bond rating reports have indicated that we are in a positive financial position. We've been assigned a positive outlook, which is always encouraging. We've been recognized for our strong finances and budgetary flexibility, which even though their reports have not been issued just yet, I expect that to be something that we continue to be recognized for in this rating period. And then, obviously, the operating reserves and liquidity relative to the budget. So we anticipate one rating next week being issued and the other rating being issued the following week. When we get those reports, we'll send them out to you as soon as they're final. All right, general fund, unassigned reserves. We just covered this, but here is our graph just so that you can see how that's changed over the years. That is looking good. And again, we will be bringing that back down to the 25% level.
Is part of that uptick due to, like, ARPA funds?
No. So this is our general fund here. Mostly, this uptick is due to the receipt of the backfill funds that we did not budget this past year. Also, the 2.4 million that we received in CARES Act funding from the state of Iowa. Transit received quite a bit of money, which eliminated our need to do that large general fund transfer. And then our salaries, we budget at 100%, and we typically expend about 97%. So all of that together kind of created the perfect recipe to produce this opportunity.
Thank you.
All right. And then this is just a report, mostly for information, the next two slides on how we're doing on both liquidity policies that we have. This slide is our governmental-type policies. We're at 292% and 160% within those funds. And then, within our business-type funds, we're at 329 and 181. This chart was in your memo from me two weeks ago. So just a refresher here that all of our funds, for the most part, ended in a positive position this last fiscal year. Okay, trust and agency. Our fund balance goal there is 25%. That is not codified in a policy, but is more of a best practice that's outlined by GFOA. We continue to work towards reaching that goal, which is the blue line. That really depends mostly on what our MFPIRSI contribution rate is going to be. That's where we fund those expenses from. So again, we monitor this when we're working hard on getting ourselves back up to that blue line, which we have not been in a very long time. Employee health fund. This one has a little bit of an interesting story here. For the past couple of years, you'll see that we are above our goal of 25%. However, as I'll share with you in some future slides, that is starting to normalize in this fiscal year, so I don't recommend making any changes there. Obviously, when you're dealing with health insurance, there's a large potential for volatility, so I'm comfortable with where we are. All right, any questions on FY21 before we move on to our current year? Okay. All right. So accounting is working to close out December. I expect that to happen within the next week or so, so you should get your monthly financial update for December, probably sometime by end of next week. So these numbers here are just through November. But our payroll costs, which is our most significant driver of kind of our general condition, are at 37.6%, which is below our expected level of 41% as of the end of November. Healthcare costs, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Why is that? Have we lost some people, or it's just, I know it's only part of the year, but...
Yep. So there is also a third payroll cycle that will happen later in the year. So sometimes you'll see kind of a larger gap. It will correct itself as we move on. And then, as I mentioned, we do budget. It's a conservative budgeting practice that we have to budget all the way at 100%. But obviously, you have employee turnover, you have vacancies, and so as you have those types of things, it contributes to that. Yep. All right. So healthcare costs, as I mentioned, these are now starting to trend closer in line with the budget number. As of the end of December, we did have numbers for this. We've spent about $8 million. The claims are about 14.5% higher than our prior year, but we are anticipating to recover nearly $2 million through our stop-loss reinsurance policy. A positive news story there is we were able to negotiate a longer-term contract on our stop-loss. So hopefully, we won't see any type of disruption with our rate there since we had that locked in. And again, some of the things driving this is, if you remember during COVID, we had many, many doctor's offices and things like that who were only seeing kind of critical type of issues. So we had a lot of folks deferring maintenance and elective-type procedures, but that's all starting to rebound now. And then our FY22 monthly average is about 1.3 million. All right. And year-to-date departments, everybody is mostly in line there. I will point out, finance is a little bit higher than the rest. That is mostly tied to, we have to pay our insurance premiums for all of our different policies in the beginning of the fiscal year, so that drives up that number on the front end. All right. Any questions on the current year? Okay. So now the fun part, FY2023. Some budget highlights are consistent with prior budget highlights that you have seen. This budget that we're presenting is balanced. It does comply with your policies for reserve and liquidity targets and all of our financial policies that have been established. Importantly, it maintains the current tax levy rate of 1678 per $1,000 of taxable value, so no proposed levy changes here. And then, it's also mission-aligned and continues our focus on our operational pillars, ARPA, and the city administrators' work plan, and your council goals that we discussed last week. I added this slide, again, mostly for information. We did share-
Ms. Merritt, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Where does this common term, this budget, hit, what's the estimate of projected reserves? Is it 25%? Or is this budget takes it, sets it at 25%? Is that correct?
Yes. So we did build in the 25% because that's the policy as we have it today. If there are funds remaining at the end of the year, we will expend those in accordance with that policy. Okay. So this is our '23 budget message. Our team prepared this for our rating agencies just to give them kind of a general overview of what we were expecting. This budget continues our focus on being in a stable condition, planning, something that I'm very proud of our team for personally, is our ability to plan for a number of scenarios. I think a great example of that is when we were looking at property taxes several months ago, we started to make adjustments. Our valuations did come in much higher than what earlier estimates showed, so that eliminated the need for that scenario. But we are always looking at things. Flexibility, continue, we continue to have flexibility. We know we will continue to get those rollback dollars even though they're not budgeted. General fund stability, lots of stability there. You'll see later on that we're showing about a negative $100,000 deficit or so, but I'm not concerned about that. That's pretty typical for us. And then growth, we're having a lot of positive growth within our major operating funds, especially within local option sales tax, which we talked about a couple weeks ago also. So the '23 budget, the operating budget, we are showing growing by about 0.81%, which is pretty typical for our community. Capital is down 3.62%. That is mostly tied to a fluctuation in grants. So no decreases in streets or anything, street sewers, any of the priorities. Yeah.
Yes. Alderwoman Lee.
How are we incorporating CARES and ARPA funds into these numbers? Are they, do they become an integral part of the budget, or are they called out?
No. So, yeah, we went back and forth on what to do there and determined that the cleanest way to do that is to continue to handle ARPA through the amendment process, not through the original budget. You also don't want to inflate your budget for historical purposes, so when you look back, it's, it kind of skews everything. So we will handle those through amendments so that they're contained. Okay. I also wanted to touch on debt here. So you'll see a 6.77% increase. This is primarily because of a recording change. Typically, our bond sale is about three weeks later than it will be this year. So when we're presenting this to you, we are working off of estimates. This year, because it's all a little bit earlier, these are as close to actuals as we can get. So that's why you see the 6.77% increase there. And then, the total budget up 0.77%. All right, property taxes. You may remember, I briefed you probably a month or two ago on the residential rollback. That was decreased. So essentially, that means that less of our residences, or less of the value of your home, will be taxable. So very positive as a homeowner, but as a city collecting taxes, we were a little concerned about what that might do to our general fund. But as I will show you here, the full valuation was 6.05%, so very, very, very strong growth for our community in terms of overall valuation. And then our taxable valuation was up 3.15%, which is right on target with what we would like to see. So again, we were very happy to see that as staff, and I think that's something that we can all be proud of. Also, just an update on the rollback funds. So we are on the seven-year phase-out plan under the state's new rules there. That should reduce the rollback funds that we're getting each year by about $300,000 until the full phase-out in FY29. But just as a reminder, we do not budget those funds now, so we don't anticipate any kind of disruption from that. All right. Any questions before we start going through the departments? Okay. Yeah.
Just a quick question. With the state interested in cutting taxes, cutting taxes, and maybe even getting rid of the income tax, what funds do we get from the state other than rollback and road and stuff? Do we get any other funds from the state where that could impact us as a city, that thing that the governor and the legislature's talking about?
Yeah, we would have to look at that. The primary ones that we get from the state would be, the larger ones are going to be road use tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't-
And then, local option sales taxes issued by the state, but it's obviously somewhat reflective of the spending within your community. So that one's a little bit different in that way.
So it wouldn't affect us greatly in terms of if they stopped the income tax, or-
I would want to look at that a little bit more, but I wouldn't expect it to.
Okay, thank you.
We'll look at that and can follow up with you. All right. So the city council office, if you are looking in your packet or have reviewed your packet, you may have seen a bit of an increase there. The city council, mayor's office, administration, and finance have some shared administrative support in Tiffany and Samantha, who do a great job for us. So from year to year, you may see some changes in their staffing allocations, which are reflective there. So otherwise, a very flat budget. Moving on to finance, finance did add the two new ARPA-related positions. One is the accountant, and then the other one is the strategic initiatives coordinator. So that was reflected in the packets that you have. We did have quite a few employee benefits election changes, which can impact the budget, and then some changes in our risk allocations because of premium costs for our policies. City administration, generally, this one also remained flat with the exception of just a personnel transfer from community and economic development, which is reflected on that budget. So a budget-neutral change, just a swap between departments.
Could Administrator Spiegel or yourself outline the hierarchy we've got now for managing the ARPA funds, both within city administration and within some particular departments like library or-
So we have kind of a matrix team built around it. Courtney Jones is the administrative services manager within finance. She works very closely with Mallory to oversee the program in its entirety. And her job is to really make sure all of the assigned staff for the different program areas are providing feedback updates moving forward. Beyond that, and then Joy and Adam, who are the two employees Mallory referred to, have very specific roles tied to that. Everyone else is dispersed across all sorts of different areas. So Chad and I and Tegan work together on the neighborhood park stuff. Courtney works with library. So it's, ARPA, once you get out of the regulatory chunk of it, functions just like any other project in the city.
What do Joy and Adams do?
Sure, I can speak to that. Joy is assigned to the accounting division, so she is the accountant that is assigned to all things ARPA. You may recall that when we first talked with you about ARPA, it was essentially like taking on a second CIP program. The value of the projects were about the same, but with a whole new set of regulatory issues and guidance that was out there. So currently, what she's working on is working through all of those justification letters with our auditors. And then she will be the one filing all of our spending reports with Treasury and just making sure that everything is moving on as how it's supposed to. And then, probably most significantly, she is also helping with the sub-recipient monitoring. So some of the projects that council approved, there is sub-recipient monitoring that has to be in place. That's a big job, the agreement for that. I think Bosh's here was probably over 20 pages of things that our recipients have to do, and someone has to monitor all of that. So she's doing a great job and learning a lot. We're proud and happy to have her here. Adam is the strategic initiatives coordinator. So he is helping out at the project management level with particular projects, currently providing a lot of support to the neighborhood stabilization projects that are going on.
And are we within the funds that we voted on for ARPA for this support administration?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep. All right. HR remained very, very flat. If you saw there, there was about a 0.18% increase. That can fluctuate from year to year based on what's going on with health insurance claims. So over 95% of the HR budget, I know you're probably looking at that thinking, $20 million here, but over 95% of that is tied to paying out our health insurance claims because we're self-insured. IT, just a few employee insurance changes, also a reorganization that was budget-neutral. So you've probably identified that they combined a part-time position with some supplies money to create a programmer position that was needed. Legal was generally flat also. If you see the percent increase in your packet, looks a little bit higher, but on a small budget, a small change looks large there, and that was tied to an employee insurance change as well. Community and economic development, there's a number of changes there. There was a change in the staffing structure due to the sale of the heritage and kind of as we rethink and rework our housing area. There were some fluctuations in our grant funding, which is very typical, especially with CDBG and how we account for that. And then, that position that we talked about earlier in administration was transferred from there. So overall, I would say budget, budget-neutral and flat there, too. Civil rights, it was about a 2% increase, which is right in line with what we would anticipate seeing. I do want to draw your attention to a request that was made. So civil rights did request through the budget process to add one additional full-time staff member. The budget that we have presented and the one that's here on this screen does not include that request as of right now. Consistent with kind of policy direction, this budget is flat from a personnel standpoint, with the exception of the ARPA positions, or in cases where departments combined supply money or reorganized other positions to create new ones. But again, I did just want to make you aware that the request was made. Public Works, you may have seen that this particular department had a 0.10% increase, which is a little bit lower than what you would normally anticipate, but it's due to a number of things here. So first, we are no longer selling, buying our salt for other municipalities. We made the decision and sent letters out on that. So if there are questions, I would send you to Nicole, who can brief you in more detail. But that resulted in us taking about $600,000 out of our budget. There's offsetting revenue for that, so it's budget-neutral, but it does make, make this look like it's going down. Also, there are typical variations in your vehicle replacement, equipment replacement programs that can make this either grow more than what you would expect or decrease by more than what you would expect in a given year. And then, an operational highlight that I wanted to draw your attention to is something that we have restructured within fleet. In many of our areas, you will see numbers going down within your capital and equipment lines. We've decided for FY23 to centralize our fleet purchasing processes. So all of those funds were transferred to fleet management. So when you look at your fleet management page, it probably grew very, very significantly. That's why. So an example would be equipment purchases and vehicle purchases for police, fire. Those are no longer showing as line items within those departments, but will be reflected here. It's a very positive change in that we can now monitor those purchases and speed them along. Also, we will be able to more closely determine future maintenance costs, and that way, we don't have any surprises. So I thank Public Works for coming up with such a great idea and Accounting for working with us to implement it.
Alderwoman Lee.
All right, development and neighborhood services, a budget increase there of about 1.44%. No major changes in that area. Police, that's another one that, if you looked at, the budget increase was probably smaller than what you were expecting. Some of that is there was a significant decrease in our required contribution to the municipal fire and police retirement systems of Iowa. So that required contribution dropped from 26.18 to 23.9. which is producing that fairly significant surplus within trust and agency, which you've probably already seen, or I will show you in a couple of slides. So that was one of the things driving that. Also, moving those equipment and vehicle lines out. And lastly, the police contract awards two GWIs within the current fiscal year. That's what they bargained. So they will get their second GWI in March or April. So for FY '23, you will not see a GWI there, which is part of what's keeping that lower.
Alderman Lee.
I noticed that we had two crime analysts from that grant. And maybe I read it wrong, but it looks like we're down to one. What happened there?
So you may recall that we pivoted through a hiring process and the council approved a contract with IDA Analytics. So we have one FTE on staff and are augmented by a commercial contract.
And how does that relate to the grant that we got for those two crime analytics?
They revised it to go forward with this path.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Fire, again, very, very flat. The increase there was 1.10%. Again, we would have expected that to be closer to two, but with the decrease in the MFPI SI, it's driving that overall increased level down. And with that, occasionally during the budget process, we will review different fees that we have and ensure that they are consistent with our comp class and in areas where they're focused on cost recovery, that they're escalating at an appropriate level. The packet that I had provided to you last week did show a recommendation to increase these fees by 10%. As staff worked through this particular issue this week, there is an update to that. So our updated recommendation would be to increase these by 5% over two years. And at this time, I would ask someone from Fire, so either Chief Carlson or Chief Morris, to come up and give you kind of an overview of what this is and why this request was made.
Alderman Lee.
Just a quick question. One of the things we keep pushing to out years, I'm afraid, is hazmat truck, a new one. Is that correct? With this many, 900 sites, and I understand you also work with other cities, so we're kind of a regionalized type thing, am I correct? Okay. How badly do we need that truck?
Our hazmat vehicle at this point is at its end of life. That's why we were attempting to find to replace it.
As well as from some of those other cities we serve?
Correct. And we do charge for our hazmat response to outline cities.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Parks and Recreation here. This area did grow by 4.75%. And I wanted to kind of explain a little bit of that here because it is fairly significant for that area. This is mostly tied to a request from the school district to increase the funding available for our stepping stones program. We are kind of the pass-through, so the stepping stones employees are paid by our payroll area. I think Chad is prepared to explain more about that to you if you are interested. But it's budget-neutral there because they are paying the cost. So although it looks like an increase of over $300,000, that doesn't have any type of impact to our budget. There's an offsetting revenue that has been built in to account for that. Okay. Library, there is a budget increase there of about 5.66%. This is tied to the inclusion of two new ARPA-related positions that were approved as part of that plan. So that's our early learning literacy coordinator and our library social worker position. All right, and that is the end of the department overview. Any other questions on that before we move forward? Okay. So General Fund and Trust and Agency Fund, these are two of our largest operating areas. The General Fund, as I mentioned earlier, as it's presented to you today, is currently showing a deficit of about $102,000. And then Trust and Agency Fund is, for the first time in quite some time, showing a significant surplus there of about $375,000. Trust and Agency, that's a very positive story for us. That will allow us to continue to move ahead towards that 25% goal that we had shown on earlier slides. And then in the General Fund, again, we could take this all the way down to zero, but I would say there's really not a reason to do that because we know that with other funding sources that are coming in that are not budgeted and with the way that we budget our salaries, that we will more than make up for that. General Fund revenues, this is just the breakdown to kind of show you how this all works. So within the General Fund, 81% of that fund is funded by property taxes. And then our General Fund expenditures, our salaries and benefits, are about 76%. Of the 76% salaries and benefits, 71% of that is related to public safety. So the majority of the General Fund is used to support both police and fire operations. When you look at these two areas combined, which we usually do, so when you have your General Fund and your Trust and Agency Fund revenues, 86% of that is supported by taxes and then 80% on the expenditure side is used for salaries and benefits. And again, this is, oh, sorry, this is the level of alignment that you want. You never want your personnel costs to be growing quicker than your tax base. All right, and then this is just the chart version of that on the expenditure side. Salaries and benefits up 2.39%, which is mostly tied to contract increases that were negotiated with our union groups. Supplies down by about 2%. We did make a couple of utilities adjustments. And then as we talked about, there were a few departments who chose to combine some of their supply money with part-time money and create positions that they desperately needed. And then our non-departmental cost, that looks like a big number there, the 14.23. It's fairly insignificant and is really tied to the number of transfers. So the more positive your financial condition is in your other funds, the less transfers that you need out of your larger funds. So this is reflective of that. Hotel Motel Tax Fund, this was our most impacted fund during COVID. We did make several budget adjustments to FY '20 and FY '2021 and put increased monitoring in place. So we are looking at this one more closely. These are quarterly disbursements. So every quarter, when these come in, we're looking at those and making sure that they're tracking with where they need to be. And this, I wanted to highlight a very positive story and recognize the council for this because we did receive positive feedback from our rating agencies. You may remember last year, we recognized we were going to have a problem within hotel motel, a potential problem. We did process a budget amendment, over $900,000, to bring that back into alignment. And then because we did that, we were actually able to end up growing our fund balance within that fund by $330,000. So that's just an example of why the partnership between council and staff is so important and something that is very much recognized by our rating agencies when they're looking at our overall condition. Our current forecasts show that our revenues are beginning to trend back in line with budget. So the latest analysis showed that we can expect about $2.5 million in the current year. And that's what this '23 budget was built on. And this is just a graph here of historical information for you. All right, our enterprise funds. Our enterprise funds, they operate as our business-type funds. We call them, in your packet and on your summary, you'll see these under the proprietary funds category. We currently have 12 of these. The measurement goal here is different than our governmental funds. So it's focused on sufficient cost recovery and making sure that we have adequate reserves, not on profit. Deficits, if we have deficits within these funds, they create operational burdens on other funds because that would mean that we're having to make transfers to cover any type of negative position that you're having there. And so this budget that you're seeing has a continued focus on prior and current council direction to apply modest and consistent rate increases, just so that they're more easily consumed by the user groups there. The Sewer Fund, we met with you several months ago now to present the sewer rate study. So PFM, our financial advisor, did work on that for us over the course of the last year and presented their recommendations last fall. Their recommendation included 5% annual increases for the next three years. So we have applied that in this budget proposal. Obviously, you would need to approve that separately through an ordinance, which we're planning to bring forward shortly, as long as we have general consensus that that's what we need to do. And then our goal within, oh, go ahead.
CFO, that's less than we usually do, right?
Absolutely.
Let's make that clear. We're actually asking for less.
Yep.
Thank you.
So our focus will be to continue to increase our available cash within this fund to deal with our long-term capital needs and the costs associated with operating our water pollution control plant. All right, so sewer and water pollution control plant, these are tied together. There is a joint-use cities agreement for the operation of that plant. It was renewed a couple of years ago. The new agreement is working out well. It did establish four different types of funds within the overall fund. So again, that was approved in '19 and has been in place for the last two years. Our cash balance within this fund continues to grow. This is what we want to see there. Our debt service covenants, we have debt service covenants due to our SRF obligation. A lot of our financing within this fund is also done through revenue bonds. And so because of that, you're required to have your debt service and your available cash at 110% of that. So obviously, when you have a revenue bond, the holder of that wants to know that you have sufficient cash to cover your payments on there. So we are exceeding that. Sewer rate changes, this is just the graph of what we just talked about. So these are reflective of the 5% increases here. So the quarterly increase that can be expected is on the bottom line there. The no-fault sewer reimbursement program, this was adopted by the city council in 2013, following a very bad series of weather events for our residents. It does provide up to $7,500 in assistance. It's managed through our risk area. And as you can see, the number of claims there have really started to stabilize. In FY '21, there were 12 claims. The available cash in the program is $592,000. And a couple of years ago, we did lower the quarterly rate that funds this program from $2 to 50 cents a quarter. So again, right now, I have no recommendations to change that. There's available cash there and it's funding itself. Solid Waste continues to trend up there. This is a healthy amount of cash within this size of fund. And each year, we continue to make kind of small gains in cash within that area. This is another one, this and the Clean Water Fund, where prior policy direction has been just to do these smaller increases to keep up with contract escalations and inflation and that type of thing. So you'll see on Solid Waste and Clean Water, the continuation of the 3% annual increases. So this is just here for information on what those rates would be under that structure.
CFO, I just want to add that years ago, the city would go years and years and years without any increases in many of these funds and then have to do a dramatic increase. And it would be disastrous, quite frankly. Through the previous council's budgets and policies and your execution, by everybody getting very small increases, and in some cases, we reduce because it's worked out. People can budget, businesses can budget, and everybody can understand what it's going to be. So I just want to emphasize that that decision to do that has really made a stable financial outlook for many people to include the citizens so they know what's coming. Thank you.
Mayor, that's an excellent point. And I should have mentioned that on our sewer rate slide, that that's exactly what we're working towards within that fund, and we're getting very, very close. So rather than having those 13%, we're now at five. And the hope is that the next time that we come to you, that we can take that down to four or three. So that is the model that has worked and is continuing to. Okay, Clean Water. There's a little bit different strategy that's applied to the cash within this fund. So within this area, the prior strategy has been to build up cash within the fund, get enough there, and then start to draw that down to do specific projects. So this was a continuation of that. You see that we built up enough cash there in '19 and '20 that during '21, we completed a project, and that's why you see that drawdown. We will start to build that back up again. So that, moving forward, is what that chart will look like there. Again, 3% annual increases within that area are proposed. A parking fund, we talked about this a little bit also already, but the parking ramp debt was fully paid off in FY '2021, so that was very positive. The focus of this fund is now going to be shifted to the ongoing maintenance and the security of our ramps. If you're looking at your packet and following along there, you'll see that that fund has about $105,000 surplus that's budgeted. We want to monitor those revenues and make sure that those hold before we start programming in higher expenses. If those continue to trend the way that we want them to, and hope that they will, then there is a potential to program that surplus in during the amendment process next spring. So that's something that we can look forward to. And we just have a general history of you don't ever want to start budgeting expenses unless you know for sure and have a year or so of trend data to support on the revenue side.
Alderman Gripp.
Thank you. So what's the amount that we were paying on debt that now we get to put back into maintenance and security?
Well, we were paying the debt through, there was some that was being paid out of parking, but a big portion of that was being paid out of debt service. And Bosch, I don't know if you have any other? So under $1 million total. So, under $1 million total.
So, all of that staying within parking and going back into the ramps?
No, so, the majority of that was being paid out of debt service. There was some being paid out of parking, but obviously, the parking fund did not have $1 million to support that.
Okay, so, for next week, can you just tell me what the difference is? So, how much, how much is staying in parking and going back into maintenance and security? Thank you.
Okay. So, this is a breakdown here, pretty straightforward and self-explanatory, but our parking fund revenues, 90% of those come from charges for services and from users of the ramps. And then, the parking fund expenses, it's a pretty even pie here, so 33% for salaries and then 37% for supplies, 12% for capital, and 18% for allocated costs. Transit Fund, this is a fund that we've talked about for many, many years for a variety of reasons. And you'll see on this chart here that in '17, we began subsidizing this fund. It was brought to our attention by the rating agencies at the time that they did not like seeing these negative cash funds, so we started to subsidize them to build up cash within the fund and have them not be negative. So, a large transfer there in '18 and '19. In '20, we got our first dispersment of some CARES Act money that eliminated the need to make that significant transfer. Same thing in '21. We don't expect to make a transfer in '22 or '23 either. So, for right now, that fund is doing just fine primarily because of the extra unplanned revenues that we're receiving.
Alderwoman Lee.
Director Gleason, what are we doing to increase ridership and therefore, increase revenues, but most importantly, increase service?
We, we're always constantly kind of reviewing where our primary ridership comes from. As you all know, we do have a lot of school district riders because of the high schools. So, and we are right now working specifically with the East Industrial Park to, as they get Amazon online, to see if we need to switch timings of routes. Right now, Riverbend's running that route for us. So, basically, as we have significant business changes, we're reviewing it, and then, we did also apply for a grant to do a route study for minorities impacted in different areas of cities. So, we'll see if we are successful in getting that grant as well. So, we're constantly reviewing, and then, obviously, from an operational perspective, when we're having operational hardships, we do focus on those higher-used routes to make sure we're keeping those running.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
All right, and then, just a graph here for you of current revenues and expenditures. Again, '20 and '21 are reflective of the extra funds that were received. That's why our revenue line is so much higher than our expenditure line. And that brings us to the end of what we have prepared for you today. Just to summarize, again, what we've already talked about, this budget does comply with all of our policies, continues the focus on conservative budgeting practices that have been the direction of the council in the past. No property tax changes here, so 1678 will be the levy, and then, again, mission-aligned and focused on council goals and the work plan.
Okay, thank you. So, again, stable, positive financial situation continues to be briefed. The CIP is next week. I'll just emphasize to my colleagues here, if you do have concerns, or particularly, if you're interested in bringing up an amendment or change or something like that, please discuss with our city administrator. Please discuss with our CFO. There is timelines to approve the budget and get it in the state, so let's make sure we do that. Alderwoman Lee.
Just a couple of leftover questions. Going back to the Civil Rights Committee, looking at their business plan, it said that they get funding from EEOC, the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, and HUD. Are those funds incorporated in the numbers we've got here?
Yes, they are set in there as revenue numbers in the General Fund.
Oh, in the General Fund?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
And then, Fair Housing Fund is also included.
Okay, okay. A quick question for Public Works. I noticed that on a couple of pages, it says that we've, you've lost three full-time employees for Operation Analytics and Customer Service. Because customer service is pretty important.
So, we, we've kind of gone back and forth with how that was budgeted as far as having them all kind of housed together or housed in administration. So, there was actually, it was budget neutral. You'll just see the correction where we moved them back to. It just makes a little more sense.
So, they're still there?
Yep.
Oh, okay, okay. Let's see. I think, oh, I just wanted to say for the police department, I noticed that for the last couple of years, there's been no special forfeitures or seizures. That's great, in my opinion. Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, one other thing, River's Edge, is there any possibility of trying to get a sponsor like Bettendorf did with their sports complex?
Yes. I mean, we do have sponsorships on the lower level, but I think you're referring to like the naming rights, like teaching K-Pay.
Something with more money.
We can pursue that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any of my colleagues on the phone? If I don't hear anything, I'll assume you're good.
No, sir.
I'll assume you're good. Anyone else? Okay, thank you again. Let's applaud the staff for putting this together. We have next Saturday also on CIP. That means capital, that means projects, so streets, et cetera. But thank you very much, let's applause. All right, be safe out there. Thank you.